Hello. Good evening, I'd like to call the March 8th, 2022 meeting of the Deer County Board of Education to order. We're meeting at First Flight High School and the time is 5:03 PM. Before we begin, I would like to request a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Next, I would like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Bothwell for writing the welcome and leading the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our March meeting here at First Flight High School. It's nice to see everyone's faces and smiles. It's been a very difficult few years, but my hope is we all move forward for the betterment of the students and staff of Deer County schools. Also, today is International Women's Day. I salute all the women out there doing brave and wonderful things for their countries, especially the women of Ukraine. And now if you will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which is theirs, one nation, united in its freedom and its justice.
Next, I'd like to announce that I am resigning as Chairman of the Deer County Board of Education. I do so with a heavy heart. I feel that I would be better served as a board member and turn the role of Chairman over to one of my fellow board members. And I'm prepared to do that at this point. I wanted to thank my board members for their support and Dr. Farley, Mr. Schwartz, and everybody else associated with the school system and the community. We've got a great school system and we have the opportunity to even make it better. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agenda be amended to have the next order of business be the reorganization of the board.
Do I hear a second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Do you want me to conduct the, want me to conduct the election? All right, the floor is now open for nominations for the position of Chair.
I nominate David Twitty.
Second.
Does not require a second nomination by Ms. Bothwell for David Twitty to be Chair. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to close nominations and elect Mr. Twitty by acclamation?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Lawler, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Balance to close nominations and elect Mr. Twitty by acclamation. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Twitty, you're now the new Chair of the Board.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, do we go now, Rich, to?
Next order of business should be accept nominations for Vice Chair.
Thank you. So, do I have a nomination on the floor for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Susan Bothwell.
I'll second it.
Is there any other names come forward to nominate?
Motion we close nominations.
Motion closed.
Motion to close nominations and elect Ms. Bothwell by acclamation. Is that your motion?
I'll second her nomination, her motion.
So, we have a motion on the floor by Mary Lynn, a second by Margaret. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No names? Congratulations, Susan.
Susan, you guys got us good.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to take a short minute for a meeting with their attorney. Recession.
Boards in recess.
Okay, we're at a recess right now. First order of business this evening is to approve the amend, the amendment to the agenda to add the Superintendent Personnel Recommendations to Item 10 and Personnel Consent Agenda. Do I hear a motion on the floor?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion.
The motion.
Motion should be to amend the agenda to add to Item 10A, the Superintendent's Additional Recommendations for the Personnel Consent Agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor by Margaret, second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who carries? Tonight, I will not be doing any Chairman remarks. We're going to.
Mr. Chair, we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended now.
Okay, excuse me. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve the motion is, as the agenda with?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
That is amended. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve that?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
We have a motion by, we have a motion by Frank, second by Carl. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're going to have recognition by Mr. Keith Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to move into recognitions now, and I'm very excited that tonight we have some wonderful recognitions from two schools. We're going to start with First Flight Middle School and then Nags Head Elementary School. So, to kick us off, I'd like to ask Principal Diane Childers to come forward and start us out with our First Flight Middle School recognitions.
Good evening, Chairman Twitty, members of the Board, Superintendent Farley, parents and stakeholders. Back in January, the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching introduced a competitive opportunity for educators to apply for a scholarship to attend a Holocaust Educator Seminar in Poland this summer. Forty-five teachers from across the state applied, and five scholarship recipients stood out from the crowd, including two of our very own. Just last week, we learned that Ricky Stewart and Suzanne Blackstock were selected as the Deer County ambassadors for the Holocaust Educator Seminar. Ms. Stewart is a native of Deer County and has been teaching in the county for six years as a high school history teacher, First Flight Middle School avid teacher, and currently a seventh grade language arts teacher. With a background in humanities, Ms. Stewart has easily been able to combine her love and knowledge of history, along with her skills in teaching students to express themselves through reading, writing, listening, and speaking. As a student, Ms. Stewart studied in Mexico and England, which only added to her enthusiasm for connecting literacy and history. Ms. Blackstock has been teaching eighth grade social studies for eighteen years at First Flight Middle School and is a teacher who encourages her students to think critically. A huge proponent of project-based learning, she enjoys getting her students to ask questions and then find their own solutions through collaboration and creation. She is always looking for innovative techniques to encourage her students to dig deeper and think more critically about content knowledge. This year, she is serving as a county coordinator for the North Carolina Holocaust Council, where she acts as a liaison between the council and Deer County teachers, and as a lifelong learner continually participates in professional development related to the Holocaust. As award recipients, they will attend an intensive one-week seminar in Poland this June. They, along with other educators, will visit the concentration camps of Auschwitz, Birkenau, Treblinka, and Majdanik, and learn about the Holocaust in the cities of Warsaw, Krakow, and Lublin. The trip will be led by Rabbi Fred Gutman and veteran Holocaust educator Lee Holder. We are so excited for both of our teachers. We cannot wait to hear about their trip, how they choose to integrate what they learn into cross-curricular lesson plans, and how they help other educators do the same. Ms. Stewart and Ms. Blackstock, please come forward to receive your awards.
Next, we would like to ask Principal McGahay and Assistant Principal Stone to come forward and share with us some exciting recognitions from Nags Head Elementary School for the students and staff there. Mr. McGahay?
Good evening, Board Chair Mr. Twitty, Vice Chair Mrs. Bothwell, other board members, and community stakeholders in attendance. I am Thomas McGahay, the principal of Nags Head Elementary School, and with me I have Assistant Principal Denise Stone. Tonight, we are pleased to stand before you as we are representing the Wave Rider family. We have some special recognitions of selected staff and students, and later we will also share instructional highlights. To begin the evening with recognitions, we want to recognize our 2020-2021 Teacher of the Year. The Teacher of the Year for Nags Head Elementary School is Mrs. Lilian Rose, kindergarten teacher. Lilian and her husband Tucker recently welcomed their first child, Jason, to the family, and she is out on maternity leave and could not be with us tonight. Our 2020-2021 Classified Employee of the Year is Mrs. Amber Wilkerson. She is our Title I Reading Teacher Assistant, and she will come forward. Amber's husband Mark is here with us tonight as well. Amber was recognized by her peers for her passion for teaching students and also for her dedication to working with others to do what's in the best interest of all students. Our next staff recognition is Mrs. Chelsea Brantley. Chelsea is the Media Specialist at Nags Head Elementary School. She was selected as the representative of the Northeast Region for, on the State Advisory Board for Digital Learning. So, she is one of only eight media specialists across the state to serve on that important committee, and they are charged with the responsibility of revising the state's digital learning plan. And Chelsea's husband Justin is with us tonight. Our next staff recognition is for Mrs. Kada Teterman. She is the School Treasurer for Nags Head Elementary School. During the 2020-21 DCS Finance Audit, she had the distinction of having zero deficiencies during a review of her bookkeeping procedures at Nags Head Elementary School. She ensures that we're all good stewards of local, state, and federal funding. Kada's husband Fred is with us tonight. Our next staff recognition is for Mrs. Jenna Dayen. Jenna is a fifth-grade teacher at Nags Head Elementary School, and during the 2021-22 school year, she successfully renewed her National Board certification. She is joined here tonight by her husband, with her husband Diego, and her daughters Maya and Tessa. Mrs. Dayen is a fifteen-year veteran teacher and has demonstrated her commitment to being a lifelong learner by submitting numerous artifacts that provide evidence of her ability to address the learning needs of all students while deepening her content knowledge. This year, at Nags Head Elementary School, we will have two staff members retiring. The first recognition, Mrs. Betsy, or Nurse Betsy Robinson, will be retiring effective August 31st, 2022, after having served seventeen years as a school nurse in Deer County schools. Recently, she received her twenty-year service pin with the Deer County Health Department. She could not be with us tonight because she is not feeling well. Also tonight, we have Mrs. Judith Fearing. Judith is retiring effective July 1st, 2022, after thirty years of teaching first grade in Deer County schools. Her Aunt Geneva and husband Craig are in attendance. Judith shared with me that prior to teaching at Deer County Schools, she worked at a local bank, and on days when schools would need substitute teachers, she asked her supervisor if she could leave and go volunteer in the schools. Judith will always be remembered for doing her tutti-tat dance on Fridays with her students. And as a member of the First Flight Society, she always shares the history of the Wright Brothers and their conquest of the air with her classes. Next, we will do our student recognitions. As part of the National Career Development Month, Deer County Schools had the distinguished honor of having twelve out of sixteen winners to represent the state of North Carolina in this national competition. Of those twelve winners, Nags Head Elementary School had three winners in the intermediate division, which includes grades three through five of Category One in the art competition. That category was the Future of Work, the Role of Artificial Intelligence and Automation. Receiving first-place honors was Dayton Dixon. Second place, Chase Davies. And in third place, Dylan Pond. And continuing with the art theme, Rebecca Gomez-Croyle is being recognized for having her artwork selected as the winning submission for all fourth-grade artwork submitted during Artsonia's Artist of the Week Online Contest, which was held at the end of January 2022. Our next group of student recognitions will be for those students who participated in the Battle of the Books. The Battle of the Books is sponsored by our Media Specialist Chelsea Brantley and her assistant, Mrs. Laura Shaw. As you know, Battle of the Books is a voluntary reading incentive program designed to encourage reading while at the same time introducing students to a variety of genres. Representing the Nags Head students at the school level for Battle of the Books, we have Taylan Taderson. Josie Martin. Julian Wooton. Jeffrey Garay Parata. Annabelle Beasley. Jeremiah Callaway. Peyton Carter. Berkeley Dexter. Aubrey Stockwell. Cannon Holzer. Emily Smith. Chris Espinoza. Oscar Windly. Emily Flores Tovar. And the next group of students will actually represent Nags Head Elementary School at the district-level competition, which will be held on March 11th. Those students are Ava Thatch. Bradley Anne Folks. Jada Perry. Dylan Wood. Abby Avalos Miranda.
Thank you, Principal McGahay and Principal Childress. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our recognitions for tonight.
Thank you, sir. I want to congratulate all of our students and our staff for their recognition tonight. You see all the hard work being put in our schools, not just at the teachers and the staff level, but our children too. What an amazing job. Thank you all so much. Next on the agenda tonight, I'd like to turn it over for industrial instructional highlights to Ms. Kelly Florence.
Good evening, Chairman Twitty, Vice Chairman Bothwell, Board Members, Superintendent Farley, and guests. The instructional highlight is always my favorite part of the night because it allows us to celebrate and showcase all of the amazing work and dedication at each of our schools. Tonight, we turn our focus to Nags Head Elementary School and how three programs are enriching the lives of the students there. At this time, I'm pleased to announce Mr. Thomas McGahay to introduce our highlight this evening.
Good evening once again. Our instructional highlights focus on literacy instruction and technology. At Nags Head Elementary School, all classroom teachers integrate literacy instruction, which includes reading, writing, listening, and speaking, as well as technology into their daily instruction. In a moment, you will watch a video that shows how selected teachers integrate literacy and technology into their respective content areas. I believe that this video is indicative of the engaging instruction and enthusiastic learning that takes place at Nags Head Elementary School on a daily basis.
Our art room is a cross-pollination room. We pollinate the other subjects. And what I mean by that is we integrate math and social studies and science and we collaborate with teachers if they need something for us to reinforce. We collect our standards together.
Oh, I think I heard it. Where was I? France, yeah, on the episode, born in France.
I do it in the art room through the other artists that we're studying. What we do is, once I have taught the art-based lesson with the other teachers' input, then we review. We go back and we analyze the outcome in the two classes. And one of the cool things is, here at Nags Head Elementary, we have a digital portfolio and the students each have their own portfolio that grows with them through the years. And it is also something that I can create and display and we put it on Facebook and our social media places. And we have a spot here at Nags Head Elementary where the portfolio will be able to roll and the students can see it. We know that art is so invaluable to every student, so why not take this opportunity to incorporate and pollinate them with the other curriculums that they're learning every
The bilingual book club, we call ourselves El Círculo de Amigos, which means Circle of Friends. It came into reality for us because we recognize the diversity of culture and language at our school. So we decided to blend our dual-language immersion students that are learning Spanish as their second language with our English-language learner students that speak Spanish. We're a place where both groups can come together and share their experiences with one another, their background, and also it's just a great opportunity for the students to support one another in their language and literacy journey.
Dare County received a $50,000 grant that helped us fund an after-school Legos robotic league. With that, we've been learning all about cargo, how cargo is transported, how it's moved, and how in this day and time, it's always changing and that we need to find ways to make it more efficient and they're always looking for solutions to those problems. During Lego League, we really have focused on team roles where you're not always the leader, you have to work together, you have to problem-solve. Our challenges are meant to be vague so that the students actually get to fail, as you would say. They try things, did it work, did it not work? And then how can we make it better? We never leave it as, oh, great, you did that code, perfect, let's move on. It's like, okay, I see that you did that, but what can we do next to make it even better? What's something else we could add or change and how would that help? So this year, because it was our new, it's brand-new for us that we are actually not really competing against each other, we are going to do more of a showcase, to showcase where our students were at and how far they've come with the project, with coding, with Legos, with teamwork. And then we will go from there in the future and possibly participate in competitions.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to share our instructional highlight. I think one of the key things that was mentioned during that presentation was collaboration. It takes a team effort, that's students, staff, community stakeholders, stakeholders, and parents in order to provide an engaging education to students and we definitely are blessed with that at Nags Head Elementary School. Subject to your questions, that concludes our portion of the presentation tonight.
Do we have anyone who'd like to ask Mr. McGahay a question? Mr. McGahay, thank you so much. It's really nice to see the work that's going into our school buildings, not just in Nags Head Elementary, but all of the others, but that's a great program.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Before we go to the next item, public comment, I'd like to recognize Mr. Rob Ross, County Commissioner, a big supporter for our school system and the county itself, so just wanted to welcome him here tonight. Thank you. And item number eight, I'm going to turn it over to public comments. Rich?
We'll now move to public comment. I'll read the following statement before we begin. The Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest or concern from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue for questions and answers or for impromptu board responses. The board may determine whether to provide information or responses to public comments if it is necessary or appropriate at a later time. Concerns regarding school personnel are usually most effectively addressed with the administration at the school or central office levels or through other existing board policies and those alternatives are encouraged by the board. The board appreciates courteous and respectful presentations. Obscene, vulgar, indecent, abusive, threatening, or profane statements, or statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting, shall not be permitted. Each person or organization will be granted three minutes. Substitute speakers will not be permitted and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. We will be using an electronic timing system that will provide the speaker with a green light when time starts. The light will move to yellow when the speaker has one minute left. The red light indicates that time is up and the speaker will be asked to leave the podium to allow for the next speaker to address the board. If a speaker wishes to submit documents to the board as part of their public comment and did not submit the documents to the person collecting the public comment signup forms prior to the meeting, they may leave the documents at the speaker's podium when they come forward to address the board. At no time during public comment or at any other time during the board meeting shall the speaker or anyone else attending the meeting approach the board table for any reason unless invited to do so by the board chair. Any person who fails to comply with these guidelines or causes substantial or continued disruption to the orderly conduct of the Board of Education's business will be removed. Failure to vacate the meeting after being directed is a criminal offense in violation of North Carolina General Statutes 14-288.4 and 143-318.17. The first person signed up for public comment this evening is Marion Midget. Speakers are asked to begin by stating their full name for the record. Ms. Midget, would you please come forward to the podium?
Hi, I'm Marion Midget. I'm with the League of Women Voters and I'm here to present your citizens guide, our citizens guide, and someone will give you these later on. This is the 22 Citizens Guide, your guide to community services. Complimentary copies of this guide are published, have been published by the League since 1988 and they're distributed annually to government and business offices throughout Dare County. It contains contact information for local, state, and national governmental agencies, voting information, emergency numbers, and a great deal more. And all of you have had these, you know, through the years, so get rid of the old ones, old information, recycle it, use the blue ones. Our guide is published under the auspices of the State League of Women Voters Citizen Education Foundation. On the back cover, you'll find acknowledgement of the municipalities and local businesses that donated generously toward our publication expenses. Thank you and thanks to all the staff members who helped to update information for this year's version. League members are now distributing 6,600 copies of this guide from Duck to Hatters Village, Roanoke Island, and Mainland Dare. You'll find them in libraries, post offices, the MOM Center, and Fessenden Centers, as well as town and county offices. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to voters. Membership in the League is open to anyone of voting age, male or female. Students 16 and older may join free and new members are always welcome. Thank you for your support. We know you'll find the guide useful. And just to note, the League is 102 years old this winter and it was organized to educate the new voters in 1920, the women who hadn't voted before and were really kept out of the loop as far as what was going on. So we continue that education piece and of course, we're interested in educating everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Midget. Next is Steve Hart. I'm sorry, Hant? Please repeat your, or tell me your name.
Steve Hant.
Thank you.
I initially had said that I would not need to introduce myself to you guys. Obviously, my handwriting was a bit troublesome. For those in the audience who are watching on the live stream, my name is Steve Hant. I am the journalism teacher here and I am the current Dare County Schools Teacher of the Year. I'm also a parent of a recent graduate and a junior here at First Flight High School. As both a teacher and a parent, I felt compelled to speak tonight about actual issues in our schools. For the last two years, you have been subjected to countless verbal attacks at these meetings. God bless you for stoically listening to wild claims about CRT, SEL, censorship. You've even been called child abusers in the vitriol surrounding masks. These verbal assaults have taken their toll on the morale of DCS staff members. Try as we might to recognize that this is just a vocal minority at the bully pit. So tonight, I would like to chat about a couple of things worth noting. First, kudos to the board and central office staff for modifying the calendar to include extra teacher workdays this semester. I am involved in meetings with other Northeast Region Teachers of the Year and there are a number of school districts that are telling their elementary teachers tough when it comes to the extra PD that they have to do. Your addition of workdays has been a blessing to staff members at all schools and judging by how many pictures of ski trips we're all seeing on social media in recent weeks, I think our families are enjoying these four-day weekends as well. Kudos as well to the board and central office staff for allowing school leaders the flexibility to work out schedules that make sense for each of our school buildings. The new 8-day B-day schedule here, for instance, has been a major boon for teachers like me and students like my daughter, who now have AP classes in bands spread evenly over the course of the school year. Board and central office leaders also should be commended for pursuing more affordable housing through our partnership with the amazing folks at DEF. My family moved to the Outer Banks on the fly in the summer of 2015 and had there not been one final apartment available, we easily could still be in Winston-Salem. In regards to finances and staffing, those are two of the items most parents and teachers actually are discussing, so I will close with these two thoughts. Please do everything in your power to address teacher supplements. Costs are not going down for everyday items and when you add in housing costs and extras such as wind and hail insurance, many of us lose money when we move here. An increase in the local supplement can help every DCS staff member and also would help offset the paltry 1.3% pay raise that teachers like me received in the state budget this year. And when it comes to staffing, please find ways to add more support staff at each school. Counselors, psychologists, social workers, they are all needed to address the growing numbers of problems our growing student population faces each day. One of the biggest losses we have felt this year, in my personal opinion, is no longer having a Carolina College Advising Corps member to help our seniors with the college admissions process and scholarship search. From Seth to Sophie to Tomas, our college advisors have been heroes in the guidance office to stressed-out seniors while also freeing up our counselors for the multitude of other tasks that they face. There's so many great things happening in our schools, from athletes sending scholarships to art students winning awards, to musicians and actors delivering amazing performances and yes, to even two more student journalists winning state Journalist of the Year honors, of which I am very proud. Thank you for letting me chat with you for a few minutes about them and thank you for your service during these challenging times.
Thank you, Mr. Hant.
David Bragg, I'd like to address hypocrisy.
David Bragg, I'd like to address hypocrisy, the false profession of desirable or publicly approved qualities, beliefs, or feelings, a pretense of having virtues, morals, principles, or religious beliefs that one does not really possess. That was shown at the last board meeting by one of the members. This same person lectured parents on their actions at previous meetings, stating that they should be setting an example for their children. Well, she threw the papers all over the floor after being served. Board members should be held to a higher standard, not only setting an example for the children, but also for the citizens. Luckily, this person will not be running for the position on the board during the next election. Also going along with that, we've got the new latest thing is rules for thee but not for me. Well, we'd like to switch that around to rules for me and rules for thee. The board's new rules: Be prepared for the meeting. Do your homework. I should not know more about the subjects being discussed than you do, COVID, for an example. Two, listen to the person speaking, and do not ask a question that has already been answered in their statement. Three, use the gavel sparingly. If we're going to respect each other's positions, the person should not be gavelled down. Four, do not use the threat of arrest. That doesn't bring the board and the citizens any closer together. We are not terrorists. No board member or any other person seated at the table should approach a citizen unless they are invited. Let's make that a two-way street. Board members should act professionally during a meeting or be censored or resigned. Let's circle back to COVID. As we've seen over the last few weeks, it was never about following the science, it was all about political science. Last week, the CDC announced changes to their metrics in definitions of county-level COVID-19 classifications of community transmission. It sure was funny how the mask disappeared when Biden was about to do the State of the Union, and the polls showed the citizens were over the vax and mask mandates. If any member of the board had due diligence, had not followed the state, federal, and county government blindly, they would have learned it was not about the science, and the children would have been back in school and not wearing masks much sooner. But it's nice to see you all out of masks, because I remember at least one comment, it was, "Oh, no, we need to keep the mask on at least one more month." But that one more month was one more and one more. And I'd like to say thank you for your service, Joe.
Next is Sue Ward.
Good evening. My name is Sue Ward, and I live in Southern Shores and am a speech pathologist who is now retired after 30 years with Dare County Schools. I'm standing here with many retired teachers from Dare County. As a group, we have worked for an extensive number of years in bringing the best of education to all age groups in our areas. We are now fortunate to have the time flexibility to be able to come to these meetings. After attending the monthly board meetings in the past year, we've realized that we should be adding our voices of support to the teachers, Dare County administrators, and you, the Board of Education. As people who have dedicated themselves to working with students, our hearts go out to the present staff and administration for their incredible workload during this pandemic. They have faced many difficulties in our schools and have continued to persevere through them all. We very much appreciate the efforts of your coalition during these challenging and turbulent times. We support the librarians and teachers' capability to select books that are appropriate for their students. We support the initiatives for mental health of students, such as the use of mindfulness or no-nonsense nurturing techniques. We understand that due to state regulations, you may not have the power to make changes in curriculum and payroll, and we understand that due to state regulations... Whoops, wait a second. And finally, we thank you for following the CDC guidance for masking and helping to keep our students healthy and in school. We want you to know that we, as previous school personnel, uphold your attempts to keep the school system functioning well with informed decision-making and civility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Next is Reese Stecker.
My name is Reese Stecker. I'm a parent of a daughter in Dare County Schools. I had no intentions of talking tonight, so I'm going to try to wing it. I read an article today that changed my mind, and I decided to come in here and throw some spaghetti against the wall. The Wilson Times reported Attorney Schwartz billed them $450,000 last year. I believe that there was another county that was billed $405,000 over the same school year. I know that it's under review whether we go with what we have or we look into something else, but I'm scratching my head, too, in that in the article, it even said, the one county said they could retain an attorney or even two over the course of a whole year for less than what they're getting billed. So, you know, I don't understand why we're not hiring somebody local. I mean, I pay taxes, I live in Dare County, I'm a taxpayer. Me personally, I would rather have a local attorney, and I'd rather have a local attorney that doesn't insult parents that go out of their way to come to meetings and badmouth us to newspapers. So my vote would be, we work on getting, looking into a new attorney. I mean, $450,000, even, I mean, Dr. Farley, that's more than you make. I mean, you're the top dog in the whole county in the school system. I mean, I just, it blows my mind that an attorney from Raleigh is making more than twice what you're making. And then I wondered, too, I scratched my head on that. He's coming from Raleigh. Are we paying for the back-and-forth? That's an eight-hours-round trip. I mean, I know it's more than $100 an hour. That's 12 months, 12 meetings a year, eight hours a trip. That's 96 hours, over $100 an hour. We're paying $10,000 just in driving fees. Or, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, the folks in the red shirts behind me want raises. My gosh, $450,000, $10,000 just in driving fees? There's money there that could be saved, and we could hire a local attorney and keep the money here local. I mean, I know there a couple of years ago, my son ran track, and there wasn't enough money in the budget for the starting blocks. The coach paid for him out of his pocket. When I hear stuff like this, $450,000 in attorney fees, I just, I shake my head. So that's what got me to come in here. My vote as a citizen and a taxpayer member of Dare County is you guys look into a local alternative and maybe what they said in that newspaper. Look at retaining a local alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stecker. Next is Marie Russell.
Hello, my name is Marie Russell, and I have three kids in the Dare County School System. One is attending middle school, and two are in elementary, both in the dual-language immersion program. As someone who went to American schools abroad and went through a similar immersion program, I commend you all for bringing this excellent program to the county. Kids are thriving being back at school, learning English and Spanish simultaneously. As a stakeholder in the Dare County School System, along with being a substitute teacher, I am very concerned with teacher retention. With over 50 teachers and administration retiring or not coming back, we are in a crisis. Teachers are not feeling supported, are burned out, and are certainly not being paid enough for the amount of work that they do daily for our kids. We need to do better, all of us. But it starts from the top down, and that is why I am here to announce that I am running for District 3 for the Board of Education as an independent. I want to be a part of the solution and to make sure that the decisions for our children are made by parents. The seats at these tables need to be filled with parents enthusiastic about finding solutions. I know that with new members and new ideas, that it's possible to improve our school system, and I look forward to working hard to make this happen for our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Next is Heidi Hess.
Hi, my name is Heidi Hess, and I'm a parent of two elementary school students. Despite being somewhat terrified of public speaking, I'm here tonight because I'm tired of these meetings being hijacked by topics that are either not relevant or impactful to our public schools. I'm motivated to speak tonight to urge us to focus on issues that will have a true impact on our students, teachers, and school staff. I moved here about four years ago, and one of the things I take great pride in is bragging to people back home about our school here in Dare County. Our classroom size and the attention and genuine concern teachers and staff have had for my kids have been met with awe. I fear, though, that if we don't start to have a laser focus on the topic of teacher retention and recruitment, everything that we have taken for granted will slip away. I believe that we and this board need to do whatever we can to keep and attract top talent so that we can continue to be one of the best counties in the state. I believe that this investment will have the biggest payoff into ensuring our children grow up to be happy and successful adults. Whether it's finding opportunities for collaboration, providing teachers with the resources they need to succeed, providing support, better working conditions, solving hurdles of housing and childcare, or compensation and bonuses, I think we need to get creative and explore all options to retain top talent, and I look forward to learning more about our current efforts. Finally, I think we need to find a way to enable all hard-working parents to have a voice at these meetings. Whether it's allowing for a limited number of public comments submitted online or some other solution, we need to allow parents who can't make a two-plus-hour meeting at 5:00 PM an opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. Next is Michelle Sanchez.
Good evening. My name is Mikal Alamedin Sanchez, and I'm the mother of four children, two alums of Dare County Schools and two who currently attend. I'm also a substitute teacher in Dare County who was a certified teacher in another state. I've attended numerous Board of Education meetings and have spoken to you several times in the past regarding my appreciation for our amazing teachers and staff, but also regarding my concerns about the direction of the BOE. I prepared two comments tonight, and I'm very grateful that this is the one I'm presenting to you. Thank you. I acknowledge that this was not an easy decision to make, and I thank all of you for putting the future of Dare County Schools, your teachers, and our children first. Now we have a great opportunity to return to the issues that really matter. I have had the opportunity to speak with teachers on a daily basis in my role as a substitute teacher, and I can tell you that they are extremely disillusioned, frustrated, and are rapidly losing their passion for teaching because of the negative environment that has been created. If we're not careful, if we do not take action immediately, we're going to find ourselves in a crisis situation. Teachers are going to retire, or relocate, or take other jobs in droves. I hear this every single day. Last month, there were over 40 Dare County teachers, administrators, and employees who announced that they will not be returning next year, and sadly, that number has grown tremendously since then, and I expect it will continue to increase throughout the rest of the school year and into the summer. If this happens, our top-performing schools are going to suffer, our children are going to suffer, the reputation of this community is going to suffer. Dare County has some amazing teachers and staff who need a Board of Education that truly listens to them, show up to the schools, really listen to them. Dare County has some incredible programs that our students are benefiting from, such as the dual-language immersion program and the social-emotional learning program. It has a community of students who desperately need you to focus on their futures. I've been proud to teach in Dare County Schools, and I chose this community to raise my children in. Unfortunately, we have strayed from the ideals and standards of a top-performing district, but I firmly believe we can return our focus to what is truly important, our children. Getting back on track will require strong leadership and wisdom from all of you, and I believe that also needs change. I'm hopeful that this change is coming. With integrity, I know that we can return to being a community that we are all proud of. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. I'm not sure about this next name, maybe Macy Cherez?
Hi, my name's Macy Shavah. I'm a parent of three children in Dare County Schools. In the spirit of International Women's Day today, I look forward to the new chair balancing the Board of Education committees so that they are well-represented of all members. One of the first acts of any chairperson is to assign board members to committees. Under Mr. Tauber's leadership, we had an unbalanced committee makeup, including Mr. Twitty on seven, himself on five, Mr. Hester and Mr. Woody on four each, Ms. Valance on three, Ms. Bothwell and Ms. Lawler on two each. This calculating move was made not only to control what came out of the committees to be presented in front of the full board, but it is an insult to the female voice, and it was a clear act of retaliation to the women who did not initially vote in favor of him as chairperson. As a mother of two daughters, I'm furious at the disrespect displayed, and I'm thankful that their teachers hold themselves to a higher standard. As a parent, I question why he was allowed to lead in this way. And Mr. Twitty, I look forward to you setting a fair and balanced committee structure. I hope this board can turn the page on disruption, distraction, hostile meetings, and move the focus back to ensuring that Dare County children receive high-quality education and that our teachers and administration are supported in doing so. I once again stand in front of you and urge you to take action. We are losing teachers, staff, and administrators at a higher rate than ever. We need leaders who will engage and support our teachers and administrators in a productive manner. We need leaders who really understand the amazing programs and offerings at our schools. We need leaders who can be proactive. We need leaders who will put the best interests of the students, teachers, and staff above the letter that is behind their name. While the past many months have been challenging, I still hold out hope that we will soon see action that portrays Dare County in a positive light, as we know it should and we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shavah. I apologize for butchering your name. Next is Liv Cook.
Hi, good evening. My name is Liv Cook. I am a parent of two students in Dare County Schools, and I'm a former teacher from Dare County Schools with eight years in. I wanted to just speak to you about two educational topics. They're not criticisms. I don't want them to trace back to any particular avenue. I'm very satisfied with my children's education in general at this time, but we introduced Chromebooks to our students, and we never made typing mandatory. And so my children spend hours in front of these Chromebooks, which I'm thankful for, but I watch them type like this. And I just think that we're failing them in letting them lead into these really poor habits for hours of their life and education, and I don't know that we're habits for hours of their life and education, and I don't know that we're setting them up for future success. Some people in corporate America respond to 300 emails a day while talking on the phone. There isn't voice-to-text that's available in all of those scenarios, and so proper typing, I do think, is important, and I do think it should be emphasized perhaps at elementary level. I know that it is offered. My children do have some multi-finger usage, but it's not mandatory for all students, and some of them miss the opportunities. So I would encourage the Board of Ed to perhaps look into a typing certification for all students or something like that, maybe before they sit in front of the Chromebooks for most of their days. My second issue is textbooks. I started teaching in the time of textbooks, and I ended teaching in the time of Chromebooks. And I can tell you that there is value in textbooks. I do not mean the paper ones necessarily, but I do think that a unified program, a unified resource for parents, teachers, and students to look at would be helpful, and I would invite the Board of Education to perhaps send out a survey to parents and teachers to see if there would be interest in bringing back textbooks even in digital format. And also, teacher retention needs to happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Next is Allison Berryman.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ally Berryman. I'm a mother of four children in the Dare County School System. I have a ninth grader, a sixth grader, and two fourth graders. For the last 10 years, I have been very involved volunteering in the classrooms about three days a week, helping teachers pre-COVID. I'm also involved in two PTAs. So I know the administrators, the teachers, and I understand how the school system works. I'm here tonight to say we can do better for our teachers. I want to thank the teachers, the administrators, and the staff. You, the teachers, have been doing an outstanding job in educating our children through these very difficult and ever-changing times. And despite all of this, the mission is being accomplished. It is because of the care and attention and the time that you have spent last night, tonight, and will spend next week. So I want to thank you for all that you are doing. I'm here tonight to talk to the board about two issues. The first one is the number-one goal, according to your website, which is to recruit, train, and retain good-quality teachers and administrators. It is an outstanding number-one goal. I would like the board to do more for the teachers. I would like to hear more about helping the needs of the teachers in these meetings. For example, how to have a better system to get subs, to increase bonuses and maybe tax them differently, and also have a full-time nurse in each school. Secondly, I would like to talk about the mission of the board, which is educate every child. The members of this board are making excellent decisions on the mission by supporting the teachers. I hope that they will even more support the teachers and the librarians in the future. I have some examples of why I think you're doing a great job. I have a ninth grader who is in speech and debate in the high school. They are tackling controversial and difficult issues. They are learning to think for themselves. They are learning to argue and debate civilly with facts. They are learning to do their own research, and because they have the freedom to explore these issues rather than be told what to think, they are more prepared now, today, tomorrow, and in the future. It is outstanding that your teachers have the trust and the support from you to tackle these complex issues, to introduce our students to them, because they are really part of the real world right now. My fourth graders are coming home with research projects, and they're being taught about plagiarism, but also how to find credible sources on the Internet. And this is a very valuable skill set that my fourth graders are developing in your school system, and I'm really proud of that. So all of this is to say, they... Oh, God, I'm about to blow up. You're doing a great job. Sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Berryman. Next is Megan Kendall.
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify heavily disseminated and misinformation regarding vaccine requirements for school attendance from a recent barrage of Dare County Health and Human Services social media posts about updated vaccines, as well as clarity regarding no-nonsense nurturing. As an educator and a mom, I know transparency builds trust. I find it alarming that Dare County and Dare HHS continuously lie to parents about what the general statutes require for school attendance related to vaccines. When Dare County social media outlets post misleading memes, they are spreading half-truths. Dr. Farley has indicated vaccine graphics posted from DCS accounts come from Dare HHS. General Statute 130A-157 states, "If the bona fide religious beliefs of an adult or the parent are contrary to the immunization requirements contained in this part, the adult or the child shall be exempt from the requirements upon submission of a written statement of the bona fide religious beliefs in opposition to the immunization requirements. The person may attend school without presenting a certificate of immunization. There is no form for requesting religious exemptions in North Carolina. To claim a religious exemption, the parent or person must write a statement of their religious exemption. This statement then is provided to schools in place of an immunization record. Statements of religious objection to immunization do not need to be notarized, signed by a religious leader, or prepared by an attorney. They do not need to be submitted to the state for review or approval. The school nurse cannot and should not question or challenge a religious exemption." Why would one want to obtain a religious exemption? Type CDC vaccine excipients into a search engine, and you will see pig, cow, insect, cocker spanulon, MRC-5, which are cell lines derived from aborted fetal tissues of developing human babies. Further, GS130A-156 states, "This commission for public health also has the opportunity for people to have medical exemptions." Why would someone seek a medical exemption? Enter HHS vaccine injury table into a search engine, and you will see a list of vaccines, their associated injuries, and time periods for manifestation. For example, if someone develops chronic arthritis seven to 42 days post-MMR, they are automatically covered. All other injuries go through federal vaccine court. I will end with a quote. "Mental health and suicidal ideation has been a topic of the Board of Health of Dare County since May 2021. We know that teachers' jobs are hard. They shouldn't be asked to be counselors, teachers, or friends to students." Pillar Four says, "In no-nonsense nurturing, teachers should create transformational relationships with students." That's impossible and inappropriate. Dr. Robert Hudson says, "No-nonsense nurturing makes the students with the greatest need for help in behaving and learning and self-regulation worse." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Next is Jessica Farnes.
It's tricky. First, I wanted to say thank you, Joe, for reaching out to me and trying hard to connect. Sorry we weren't able to meet in person, but I do want to acknowledge that we really tried, so I appreciate that, and thank you for allowing someone else the opportunity to serve as chairman. Like most of us, I'm concerned about the public education crisis. All over the country, counties are losing teachers in droves. Dare County is no exception. We have to come up with some creative ways to attract new graduate teachers to our county and ways to retain the wonderful teachers we already have. Change is needed, and because of that, I intend to run for Board of Education, District Two, in the coming election. I believe that representation matters, and I want to be a voice that represents parents, students, and teachers in the community. Dare County is a special place. We have a community that bands together when the going gets tough, and we need to band together to get politics out of our school board and sensible parents with a common goal on. We need to work together to ensure we can secure and retain great teachers and retain them through a proper retirement. We need to take care of them so they can take care of our students. Support staff, a streamlined technology, someone with a backbone to get up and stand up to state policies, to march with our teachers to Raleigh, and bring Dare County back to the standard that we all know Dare County to have. I genuinely believe that we can grow together. We can shift our focus on what really matters, our teachers and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farnes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the public comments.
Thank you, Richard. Item nine, announcements. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Farley for announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Four announcements. First, we're very excited and proud. Manio High School, which has been a model avid school in Dare County Schools for several years, is going through a process to become what's called an avid demo school. There are only two other high schools in the state of North Carolina with that distinction, and we're going to work with the school, Dr. Parker, Principal Luciano, Assistant Principal Pritchard, and the school staff through the spring in applying for that. And there's a pretty strong indicator that Manio High School is going to be recognized as an avid demo school, so it's quite an accomplishment. Proud of that work. Secondly, we are in the planning stages and phases of planning for summer school for the upcoming sessions. Where, as you recall, last year, the General Assembly mandated summer school for... It had to be offered to at-risk students. We had about 575 students who attended two different summer school sessions last year, one the last two weeks of June, and then the second session was the last four weeks. And we had two different components. One was enrichment, and then was intense literacy and math instruction. There's no indicator currently that it will be mandated by the General Assembly, but we have looked at several different funding sources so that we can provide a summer school for students and parents who want the opportunity. And we will come to the board in the next meeting in April with our recommendations and summer school planning. And we need to start now, families who are interested in the opportunity, are planning vacations this time of year, sporting events, and staff. A lot of our staff, in fact, we did a staff survey a couple of years ago. This is around the Teacher Supplement Commission work we did. At the time, 50% of Dare County school teachers were working a second job. So we've got a lot of staff that do work summer jobs, and we're trying to line up staff more in advance. So more details on summer school coming in April. Next, Holly King, our Director of Technology, is back there in the third or fourth row. Holly, would you please stand? Holly has received a prestigious award, and she's passed the national exam to be a certified education technology leader, and this is from an organization called COSIN. COSIN is the Consortium for School Networks. It's the premier association for tech leaders in the country. And the last announcement is a sad one, and one I didn't want to have to make today. On July 1st, there'll be a gaping leadership void in Dare County Schools, because after 36 and a half years, Sandy Kinsel has announced her retirement. Sandy is one of the most dedicated people, educators, that I've ever worked with in my 79 years in public education, or so it feels. Sandy has been an expert not only in curriculum, financial management, research, professional development, supportive of our principals. Two years ago, after spending much of her career in curriculum instruction, I asked Sandy to take on federal programs and the human resources role, which she has excelled There's a lot of sad staff members, leaders, in Dare County Schools today with this announcement, and I can't speak highly enough for your loyalty to the profession, to the community, to students. Sandy is someone, when there's a birthday or some kind of celebration, a recognition, even though Sandy's working 18 hours a day, and Dr. Farley forgets to... When birthdays come up and everything else, Sandy's always the first person to recognize staff, go the extra mile, and the little things with Sandy Kinsel means a lot. And you've been an absolute ultimate professional, and you are going to be greatly missed, and I salute you and the work that you've done for the last 36 years, and you have impacted hundreds of thousands of students, staff, and leaders, and we can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Dr. Farley and Sandy. I'm not even going to try to even add to what Dr. Farley has said tonight. You will be greatly missed on behalf of Dare County Schools and our Board of Education. Thank you so much for the hard work that you have done over the years for us and brought us to a level where we're currently at right now, and it shows your hard strength and dedication to Dare County Schools.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to thank everyone for the opportunities that I've been provided by coming here to Dare and serving this community, our students, and our staff. It has been an honor, and this decision did not come about lightly, but the questions will start circulating. My dedication to my profession and to the people that I serve hasn't come without a cost, and it's time that I focused on my family. I have aging parents in Pennsylvania that I'd like to be able to spend more time with. I'd like to get reacquainted with my husband and be able to enjoy a little bit of Sandy time, so I will continue to work hard through the end of my months here, and I hope to be able to help train the next person. So thank you for the opportunity.
We're going to move to item 10. The next item on the agenda would be the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the personnel consent agenda, minutes of the February 8, 2022 special and regular session meeting, minutes of the February 28, 2022 special meeting, budget amendments, and the Dare County School Summer Accountability Program Plan for 21, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'm... Maybe we accept the consent agenda?
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second by Margaret. Any further discussion? Here none? Hold in paper?
Aye.
Okay, passed. Next on the agenda will be the reports and items from Dr. Farley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This would fall under announcements, but I had to wait for the board to approve the personnel agenda. With Sandy's retirement, we are promoting two leaders, two new roles, this evening. Let's have Johanna Parker to stand up, and Dr. Keith Parker, who have been named Assistant Superintendents. Congratulations. Item A under reports.
Real quick, John, I want to say you two have some big shoes to fill. Real quick, John, I want to say you two have some big shoes to fill.
Under item A, under reports and items for information, is the DEF BOE Joint Housing Committee update. So Mr. Woody, Ms. Lawler, and Mr. Hester and I have served on this subcommittee. We've met several times in the last five or six months, looking at the possibilities of increasing teacher housing opportunities in Dare County. And recently, the focus has been on, as we've shared on a few occasions, the possibility of expanding at Ron Hill Ridge, where we currently have 24 units, and there is lots of land to potentially build and expand. Is DEF, the Board of Directors, have looked at the possibilities of engaging with engineers and architects and the expansion concept. Recently, they've looked at the idea of possibly building 12 more units, which are, if you're not familiar with our units in Dare County schools, they're generally about 1,100 square feet, two bedrooms, two baths. And so they've, the engineers and architects have looked at the idea of adding 12 more units, or even entertaining the concept of 24 single units, and there is enough land there. Unfortunately, currently, the Subcommittee and DEF are looking at some mountainous challenges with being able to fund and expand projects. So we're not necessarily in a holding pattern at this point. The architects are gonna come back and provide some additional possible structures and ideas where maybe it's a little more affordable, but there's at least a $2 million challenge for us, and DF is considering maybe its annual membership drive focused on raising all that funding, but that would take a significant amount of time. So we're paused at this point. We expect to have another update coming in April, and I'd be happy to turn over to Frank, Margaret, or Carl, who's also on the committee.
Y'all have any comments? Carl, Margaret?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, everybody knows the cost of a building has gone way, way, way up, and just, it's just super expensive. So we just gotta find some alternatives or something, some way to bring it down.
And it's not that they don't want to address the lack of teacher housing, because we know that's gonna be very critical, but like Carl said, the cost of everything is too expensive right now.
Thank you. Next, most of these are pretty quick. So the next item for information is the temperature check stations that we've had in schools. So we've had two stations at both bus and front entrances since the pandemic began. And thank you Commissioner Ross and commissioners who, about 18 months ago, purchased $88,000 so that we could get these platforms and the software in place. And at this point, there's where we are and how the pandemic has progressed, and now it's endemic. We don't have a need for, to have those temperature check stations out in front of schools. So in the next 48 hours or so, our facilities team is gonna go and collect all those. They are precious cargo, because when we purchased these units, we went into this knowing at some point when we'd be on the other side of the pandemic that we could purchase software to transition those into visitor check-in stations that we might be able to man in our front offices. So we're gonna pull them temporarily. We're trying to get some bids to take a look at what the costs would be, and we would expect in August to transition into some kind of a higher-tech check-in system of visitors. Next, item C is playground installations. So we've been fortunate with our CIP plan, which is the Capital Improvement Plan, and the Board will vote on this year's plan in just a little bit. But we do have a five-year plan. In the last couple of years, we've built about $80,000 into our CIP plan to improve playground structures in our elementary schools. And we're gonna have some excited kids in about 10 days at Manio Elementary School and at First Flight Elementary School. We'll have new playgrounds up, and I've got two kids at First Flight Elementary School that are pretty pumped about it, and I think we've got 350 more at First Flight and 550 at Manio. So thanks to Russ Gerganis and his team. They did a demo over the weekend, and probably in about 10 days, those playgrounds, kids will be running all over them. So that's pretty cool. Next, item D is the Public School Budget Update. So this is the time of year where Candy Tilly and her team are going about 18 hours a day in budget builds. So for the public, we have about a $65 million annual budget. It's gone up significantly during the pandemic, but typically you have a $65 million local, state, and federal budget, and we generally work from about December through May in that budget build. And we're very diligent in giving every staff member in Dare County Schools an opportunity to make requests. So as we move through, when we got back from Christmas, every school had an opportunity either by grade level or department to make requests that was channeled up to a school improvement team. The school improvement team then sends that up to Central Office, and we've spent a lot of days in the last two or three weeks looking at previous spending patterns, projections for ADM. A big driver for us in North Carolina is the number of students who are projected to be enrolled come the fall, because your funding is based upon that. And we are now in a position, tonight is the first official step, in asking the board to approve the five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Gerganis will present that in a little bit. As we move through the next two months, the first week of April, we'll probably have, or will have, the Packet Committee has asked us to have a budget workshop, which gives us an opportunity in April for the board to spend a couple of hours in a Q and A session looking at the budget, and we'll cover all the different facets of the budget. The board will get, at the April 12 meeting, a draft budget. By statute, the board has then 30 days to review that, and then in the May 10 meeting of the Board of Education, I believe that's at Head or Secondary School, will ask for formal approval, and then it will go to the county. As the board is aware, and I think the public through some media outlets, we have had a couple of five-on-five meetings this year. So for those of you who don't know, five-on-five is a process that the Commissioners and Board of Education developed nine or 10 years ago for historians, Margaret. We are five representatives of the Board of Education and five for the county commissioners, and it's, those five include the Superintendent, the Finance Officer, the County Manager, the Finance Officer meet, talk about the public school budget, preview for the upcoming year. And when we met about three weeks ago, we had a, I did a presentation, the Commissioners really proud that last year we saved $2.6 million of additional local funding. So for those of you that have a savings account, the fund balance is your savings account in public schools, and we have a formula agreement with the county where our savings account can't go over $1 million, and if it does, it goes back to the county. And last year, for a lot of reasons, we weren't in school for seven months, we saved a lot of utility costs, we were very conservative in spending, we had less of COVID funding, I cut $800,000 in Central Office. Our savings account went from $1 million to 3.6 million. So when we met with the Commissioners, I was advocating to use part of that funding to increase the teacher supplement. Unfortunately, the Commissioners who were at the meeting, not the full board, were in agreement to at least have me go and present to the Commissioners, I believe sometime in March. Is that Mr. Overman up there? Okay. Right, just Mr. Ross. Okay, okay. Sorry, I don't have my glasses on, so I'm a little blurry. And they were very receptive for, to have me go and present to the Commissioners formally, and we will include an increase in the teacher supplement in our budget build, so we're excited about that, and for a lot of reasons. And part of the work in that presentation also was that prior to the pandemic, we put together a Teacher Supplement Commission of about 20 teacher leaders and administrators, and we spent a couple, two to three months, looking at cost of living in the Outer Banks, studying the 10-year history of the teacher supplement, comparing Dare County Schools' supplement to other districts. And at the time, I believe we were number 31 out of 115 districts, and so the work of that commission really paid forward. It was a lot easier for us to be concise in making a presentation to Commissioners, so fingers crossed on that. Any questions on the public school budget process at this point? Great, thank you. And then last, under items for information, so we're excited, we didn't know this was coming, there's an athletic facilities repair and renovations allotment that came down from the Department of Public Instruction. It's $111,000. It was distributed across the state, and we can use that funding for any indoor or outdoor athletic facility, and that's kind of like a little gravy funding source we didn't see coming. And so we'll dive into our school requests and see how that we're gonna progress in allocating those funds. So that's some good news. That's all I have for reports and items for information. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Dr. Farley. Any questions for Dr. Farley? We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is unfinished business. There are no items listed under the agenda item for the board to consider this evening, so we're gonna move to the new business, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Farley.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first new business item is masks on school buses and vans, and I think that most of us are aware that the CDC on Friday, February 25th, made an announcement. There's been an order for about the last six to 18 months requiring the use of face masks in public transportation, which included school buses. The CDC has now lifted that order and recommended that it, that it's not a mandate, and so I am going to recommend to the Board of Education tonight that face masks or face coverings on school buses and in vans and for the community, we don't transport students in vans, the only vans, use of vans are for adults who may travel to professional development or on school trips. So the recommendation tonight is to remove the mask mandate and for it to be optional effective immediately. And Mr. Schwartz may want to touch a little bit on the CDC process over the next couple of months.
Right, the CDC has actually, the order is still the same, but the CDC announced it's not going to be enforcing the order for, that portion of the order that affects school buses and vans and public buses, other public buses and vans. So the order is in the process of being amended. That's gonna take some time to go through that process, but for now, they're not enforcing that part of the order, and you're free to not follow it.
And there's also been an update, was it today? The North Carolina Public School Health Toolkit has also changed some language in there, where it's, it's no longer a required mandate, or at least a recommended mandate, excuse me. And Dr. Davies, their Health Department Director, is in agreement with the recommendation.
Right, I sent you all an update on that yesterday, I think.
Yesterday.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to make wearing face covering optional on Dare County school buses and vans beginning March 9, 2022?
Mr. Chair, I move we make face, wearing, make wearing face coverings optional on all Dare County school buses and vehicles beginning March 9, 2022.
Have a motion on the floor from Mary Lynn?
Second.
Second from Joe Talbot. Any other discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item of new business is removal of Regulation 4231-5021-7263-R. This is a regulation that I created early in the fall, as we, if you recall, when we moved into the winter sports season, so that, you know, the requirements when we're out on football fields and soccer fields in the fall are different when you're getting into inside congested areas at the time, wrestling, basketball, volleyball, so on and so forth, indoor track. And so I created a regulation that had the different COVID district requirements that were in it, and with the board's vote tonight to support the optional face mask, the face mask option on school buses, part of this regulation still had that in there, so this is a kind of technicality, but with your approval tonight of item A, then my recommendation is to remove this regulation, period.
Do I hear, do I hear a motion on the floor to remove Regulation 4231/5021/7263-R facing coverings from the policy manual as requested?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we remove Regulation 4231-5021-7263-R face covering from the policy manual as requested.
Motion on the floor for Frank?
I'll second.
Second by Carl Woody. Any other discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is looking for approval of a Center for Safe Schools safety grant. So since I've been the Superintendent, Dare County Schools, our team, our administrative team have done a lot of work in trying to improve our school safety. So if you recall, pre-pandemic, we had a school safety forum 40 yards from here in the auditorium, and in the last three or four years, we've installed panic buttons in every school, we've done a lot of tabletop drills with law enforcement officials, a lot, a lot more coordinated drills, we've done training, we've moved to a web-based platform with all of our confidential safety plans so that EMS and law enforcement can access those readily and easily. We have also had the See Something, Say Something app as a part of our safety protocols, and we've won some grants to improve cameras and add cameras in our schools, and we've also had vape detectors in a couple of our schools. So we want to take it to the next level in looking at how we can improve how we communicate, and God forbid we have some critical emergency situations, but we're trying to be as prepared as we can. So we thought maybe this was a long shot going in, but we applied for a grant to the Department of Public Instruction. Dr. Shannon Castillo, is Shannon here? Stand up, Shannon. Shannon wrote this grant, and we won a $315,000 school safety grant. Thank you, Shannon. So in anticipation of the possibility of getting this allotment, we've had three or four vendors come in and spent a significant amount of time looking at what we thought would be a really good fit for Dare County schools. With approval of the grant tonight, we're gonna continue to look at how we may implement, hopefully, I'm not sure when the money comes down. Candy, do we have any idea when the money will come down? Okay. It's in? Okay. So we can move pretty rapidly. So what this will do for us is, what's that? Okay. Okay. This will provide us with a multi-platform, multiactivation system that will include live voice, recorded messages, text messages, and administer, any administrator can be anywhere in a building, go to an app, God forbid if there's some emergency, we've got to go into a lockdown. It'll flash up on every laptop, Chromebook, in the public schools, a warning. We're gonna put strobe lights in, we'll be able to have new PA systems, we'll be able to have digital signage in big spaces like this, where sometimes when you have 40 kids running around bouncing basketballs and maybe hear, hard to hear an announcement. We'll significantly be able to improve communication outside. It will include new key fobs for staff, so staff will be able to come in and fob two particular doors as they enter and exit buildings, and there's a ton of possibilities as we look to improve communication, whether it's a fire drill, a lockdown, tornado drill, and it's also, fortunately, the one vendor we're leaning towards, they have, their software's aligned with Blackboard Connect, and so that, of course, is our messaging system, and we're really excited about the possibility of, if we need it, God forbid, hopefully we don't, but at least we feel like we'll be better prepared in communicating in these situations, and it really expands our ability to be much more thorough if needed. So we'll come into the April meeting with more details in the timeline, but we need grant approval first from the board, and looking for a recommendation, approval of the $315,000 Center for Safe Schools grant. Also, this is funding that came from the General Assembly in the last session, and it's not COVID-related, it's a different funding source the General Assembly added to the budget bill.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the Center for Safe Schools safety grant in the amount of $315,000. So we have, we have a motion on the floor from Carl Woody, second by Margaret. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Shannon, for really jumping on that and being diligent. We appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Kensel, looks like you're up next.
Good evening, Chairman Twitty, Madam Vice Chair Bothwell, members of the board, and Dr. Farley. The first policy that I'm gonna be presenting The first policy that I'm going to be presenting for discussion and consideration is the mask face color, face covering policy that we are obligated to bring before you each month for consideration of, and any modifications you would like to make. So I will turn it over. We are not recommending any changes at this time because the February 8 meeting, the board voted to make masks and face coverings optional. So we would recommend that there be no modifications at this time.
Chairman Twitty, I move that we make no modifications to policy 4231-5021-7263 face coverings.
We have a motion on the floor from Mary Line.
I'll second.
Second by Susan. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I might point out one thing on the, on this policy, it still includes the use of face coverings as required, only when on school buses or other school transportation vehicles, subject to the exclusions and exemptions in the CDC order. I would suggest taking out that sentence. It's the last sentence in the first paragraph of the policy.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Motion, we remove that sentence from the policy.
Got a motion by Mary Line.
I'll second.
Second. Carl Woody. Any other discussions on that?
Thank you for catching that, Rich.
Thanks, Rich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, thank you, Rich, for that, too. Not knowing we were going to be able to remove that from our other policies and procedures. Next is a first reading and a recommendation that the board consider to adopt on first read policies, two policies that have come out of actual webinars that some of our finance staff have been attending regarding taxes. A new member to our team, Rashad Daniels, brought this to our attention as it relates to responsibilities for individuals or groups who are using our facilities and charging admission, that they are actually responsible for the taxes on the collection of whatever they are bringing in at the gate. So we have placed that into the facilities use policy, and that number is 5035. And also included it on the application that the individual will complete to turn in for use of the facilities. And that is a regulation form that's attached to the policy. So again, we would recommend that this be adopted on first read this evening if the board is willing to do such.
Do I have a motion on the floor to waive the second reading of the revised policy manual updates as requested?
Mr. Chair, I move we waive the second reading of revisions to board policy 5035 and revisions to the form of regulations 5035-R as requested.
Second on the floor?
Second.
Second by Frank. Motion by Margaret. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, now, we need to have a motion to approve the revise to board policy 5035 and the revision to the form of regulations 5035-R.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the revisions to board policy 5035 and the revisions to the form of regulation 5035-R as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Margaret. Second by Mary Line. Further discussion? All in favor? All right, looks like we got next on the list is Mr. Russ Gerganis and Ms. Candy. Uh-oh, you're the Lone Ranger today, buddy.
I tried to get her to take my place tonight, but, you know, she didn't want to, want to show up. So she showed up, just didn't want to take my place. But good evening, Mr. Chair, Mrs. Vice Chair, Dr. Farley, members of the board. I'm here to present the annual five-year capital improvement plan for Dare County Board of Education. This is a fluid document that comprised a list of projects, mainly over $50,000. They're, present to the Board of Education for approval, which then goes to the county to adopt and place within their budget. We have several projects identified in the upcoming year from air handler place, replacement to a cooling tower replacement, some flooring repairs, more playground equipment, as Dr. Farley had mentioned, and some HVAC controls hardware upgrades. Early on in February, we had several meetings with, in staff internally to discuss these projects, to see how they align with the district needs and our school requests. We then went into a meeting March the 2nd with a CIP committee, which comprised of three board members, which collectively, we discussed the projects. There was one or two projects that might have been pushed out because it was not of a need, other projects pulled forward. And this is the list that we have brought to you this evening for full approval at the board. So the recommendation that the board, Dr. Farley recommends that the board approve the capital improvement plan as presented. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to just say thank you to you and Candy for, I know how much work you guys go into making sure all these projects get funded and working with the county and trying to make sure we have all that going. And you guys do an amazing job of communicating and making sure our schools are taken care of. And I know those chillers are a pain in the butt, but, but thank you for your hard work in making this all come together.
I think the biggest thing right now is just lead times. It's the interesting times we live in. Those chillers that you speak of, it's a 30-week lead time. So from funding and approval to actual implementation.
Right.
Importantly, that with school not, you know, not hindering school activity.
Right, because you're budgeting this, and then their prices are going to jump in 30 days, and you've got to go back and revisit everything. So again, thank you for that.
I'd like to commend you also, after attending the meeting, it was neat to see how much time and effort was put into spreading the love for the money and, and, and looking for it so that the schools would fare equally. And it took a lot of effort, time to weigh all those different factors, and the school system is much better positioned. So thank you for all that hard work.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So with that said, do I have a motion on the floor to approve the capital improvement plan that is presented by Russ?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Dare County School capital improvement plan for 2022, 2023 through 2026 through 2027 as presented.
I have a motion on the floor by Frank.
Second.
Second by Susan. Any other discussion?
You beat me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Russ, looks like you're up again.
So I come to the board tonight for approval of a contract to replace a flat roof section at Cape Hatter Secondary School. If, 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 we've been through this together in repairs of Hurricane Dorian, we were able to get a complete replacement of the gymnasium and the library through insurance proceeds with mitigation efforts that provided, funding provided through FEMA to upgrade some of the modified bit roofs to a standing seam metal roof. This section of roof is a two-story, sixth-grade section, kind of in the middle was an older part of the facility. It was damaged during Hurricane Dorian, but only to an extent insurance deemed that you have to make a repair. This was already a project identified in the five-year CIP that we have heavy leaks in that area. We have water that has been leaking for years down the edge of the block wall, causing evasements in the paint to deflate off. So it's been identified, and now, yeah, we're coming for approval. It was approved last year and last year CIP. And the scope of the project is replacing about 8,100 square, 8,100 square foot of white rubber TPO roof, going back with a mechanically fastened, same type of roof, providing a 20-year warranty. This is a recess roof, so we have like a three-foot parapet wall, so all new flashing all the way around. Partial problems that we've had with leaking in that area is some of the scuppers that release the water from standing in that parapet wall section are not sized appropriately. So we're going to increase that size as well as address some gutter issues. The total scope of the project, bid submitted by a qualified roofing contractor with reference check is $151,100. So tonight, I asked Dr. Farley and recommends that the board approve the contract with Baker Roofing in an amount of $151,100.
I want to say, I've been here for 20, 24 years now, and from the first time I came here, my sister-in-law was at that school, and there was problems with that roof. There has always been problems with that roof. And although Dorian caused us a lot of grief and caused you a lot of headache, it uncovered a lot of issues that we have been able to address to prevent further damage. So with that, I will say, I move we approve the contract with Baker Roofing in the amount of $151,000. I'm sorry, wait a second. $151,100 and other contingency costs for the flat roof replacement at Cape Hatter Secondary School as requested, and authorize staff to finalize contract documents and issue a notice to proceed to the contractor as soon as possible.
We have a motion on the floor by Mary Line.
I'll second.
Second by Carl Woody. Any other discussions?
There's some happy people in Hatters.
That's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Russ. Next item on the agenda is board member comments. I'd like to start with you, Woody. Do you have any comments tonight?
No, I'm good. I'm good. I'm glad to see that we got that $315,000 grant, 315, 315,000. Thousand, yeah, yeah, grant to improve the safety and security. So that's all.
How about you, Margaret?
I'm fine, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
I got one other thing.
Sure.
Please pray for those that are in Ukraine, families, and those that are involved with it. It's a sad, sad situation.
Mary Line?
I'm going to try to say, I'm, I just want to say thank you to Sandy for all your hard work. And thank you to the team at Central Office when something like this comes that you guys are all ready and willing to step up and cover for each other and help each other get to where you need to be. And we're very lucky to have all of you, and you're always looking out for our students. And I just, congratulations on your years of service. You've been in the education business a long time. So thank you. Enjoy your father.
Frank?
Yes, words, I have no words other than Sandy. I'm going to miss you, and you have left some big shoes to fill, and you have set the bar high. And I also want to let people know that there's been a lot of work, working towards trying to resolve an issue for housing for teachers, and a lot of diligent work going towards trying to find something on Roanoke Island. And we won't give up on that. Thank you.
Jim?
Sandy, I've had nothing but respect for you in terms of how hard you work, and I've seen how hard you work, and I appreciate your efforts, and I'd like to wish the best of luck to the new board chair and the vice chair.
Thank you. Susan?
Yeah, I too want to, I'm glad I get to work with Sandy for a few more months. It's great. And I wish you all the best of luck. And for Keith and Joanna, I'm looking forward to working with both of you two. So thanks.
I'd like to thank everybody tonight for coming out, and certainly all the hard work that our staff is putting into our school system. Seeing these videos tonight and seeing what the children are, are learning in our buildings is remarkable. And what you've seen tonight was only one school. All of our schools are doing the same thing. So, you know, we, we got to really appreciate our staff for, for stepping up and, and giving this education to our children. It means a lot to us. So with that saying, do I have a motion on the floor to adjourn?
And before I adjourn, Sandy, I'm sorry, I neglected. Thank you so much for all that you've done for us. Appreciate it. Now I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second. It's your job, David.
I made a motion by Margaret, second by Susan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.